Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Madeline Scales-Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, ma'am. May we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you because you're awesome. And Lord, you are God all by yourself. You don't need any help, Lord. You're just awesome. We come to you thanking you for our many blessings that we take for granted, just like just being here in this moment, Lord. Something that we don't think about, but we thank you for that. We thank you for the things that you've given us, the many blessings, seen and unseen, that we don't deserve, but it's just through your grace that you allowed this. And Lord, please forgive us of our many sins. And Lord, bless the ones out there that do not know you and the pardon of their sins, and that may we as Christians be a light to those that are lost. And Lord, with all the tragedies and everything going on around us, a lot of people don't have brags, but we can brag about we're in a very safe city, and we just thank you for that. And with the storm and everything last week, Lord, we thank you for the employees that were out just to make it where we could be safe and comfortable in our own homes. We thank you for that, Lord. We thank you for our schools, our teachers, our children, and we thank you for our veterans. Those that are in nursing homes, those that are depressed, those that are grieving, Lord, we just ask that you be a comfort to them at this moment. And Lord, as we begin the business of the city, we ask that you move among us that we will make decisions that will be pleasing in your sight. This is our prayer that we ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a few ceremonial items tonight. Would want to point out, I think Councilman LaLance, you have a son who has a birthday today.
Yeah, happy birthday, Adam.
How old's Adam today?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And I have, yesterday was Luke's birthday. I have the twins, and today, or excuse me, yesterday was Eli's birthday, and today is Luke's birthday. So they are fourteen today. As a matter of fact, I remember when I was on Planning Commission, they were born, and they had pictures on the screen when they were born. So that was fourteen years ago, so, and many hair follicles ago, too. So, and Madeline, we need to pray that our Wi-Fi gets to working, too. So, none of that's working right now.
I'll put that in the prayer tonight.
All right. Greg Tucker is here for our first installment of 2018 for our Rutherford County and Murfreesboro history. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And don't be embarrassed, I confuse my children's names frequently. You know, we all make mistakes. And when it's an individual mistake, usually we make an effort to correct it, and we learn from it, and we move on. Sometimes we make mistakes that affect other people. It makes things more complicated, because that means other people are gonna have to be involved in correcting whatever was there. And it strikes me that people working in a public capacity, such as elected officials, the mistakes can be even more difficult, because they have a broader effect and reach much further. And an excellent example of that, two hundred years ago, you can see a smile of relief. Two hundred years ago, the founding of Murfreesboro illustrates very much this situation. Actually, it was more than one mistake kind of compounding. And the first was occurring way back in the seventeen eighties, and by eighteen twelve, it was taken for granted, you'd run into these kind of problems. When the North Carolina grants were made and given as payment to the revolutionary veterans, surveying was in its primitive period, and the terrain was rough. And as the grants began to be claimed and worked, frequently were found space in between that was unclaimed, or we would find that the grants overlapped, and we'd have two people claiming the same. As I think we've discussed before, before Murfreesboro was cited, Colonel Hardy Murphy had gotten a hold of about eighty percent of the territory surrounding what became Murfreesboro. About twenty percent was controlled by William Lidle. And Colonel Murphy died in eighteen oh nine, and shortly thereafter, Lidle petitioned the state of Tennessee because he had determined that there were two hundred and ten acres completely surrounded by his property and the Murphy property. He applied for a grant and was given those two hundred and ten acres. The property that he offered finally to cite Murfreesboro was part of those two hundred and ten acres. And if you can think again of a doughnut, we're talking about the hole in the center of the doughnut. It's often been written that he donated sixty acres. No, he didn't donate anything. It was a hard bargain, and eventually he agreed to exchange sixty acres of raw land in this new grant he had gotten, in exchange for a corner of the square once it was laid out, so he would control one corner. He also insisted on the authority to develop the first subdivision on the north side, which would have been the rest of the two hundred and ten acres, as the first subdivision in Murfreesboro. Well, and when the deed was written, apparently the state-appointed town commissioners were a little peeved with him, because they insisted on including in the deed, and you can pull this at our registrar's office, a statement where he acknowledges that "I, William Lidle, am being greatly benefited by this transaction." It certainly was not a sale. But in any event, it was supposed to be sixty acres. While all this was going on, the estate of Colonel Hardy Murphy was making its way through probate. It was so massive that the Tennessee State Legislature was acting on the, on his estate. In eighteen fourteen, the probate was finally completed, and the heirs, mostly his children, were able finally to take possession and act on what they were receiving. Sister who married Mr. Hilliard, and Mr. Hilliard chose to stay in North Carolina, but they hired an agent to come over to develop and get ready for sale some of their property. And they discovered that twenty acres roughly of their property had been included in the sale that Lidle had made. In other words, he did not give good title to the full sixty acres. Let me see if I can get help to put up a diagram. There we go. This diagram is a modern reconstruction of the original plat. It was made out for the new town of Murfreesboro. You can see west main, east main, north main, and south main. The dotted line across the, the dotted line across the, just south of the courthouse, was the property line. Everything south of that line actually belonged to the Murphy heirs. Everything north was part of the two hundred and ten acres. What was done, well, it took them two years to sort out the property rights. In eighteen sixteen, the Hilliards signed another deed in which they quitclaim to each one of the numbered buyers, because the buyers had, the sale had been made in eighteen twelve. So they quitclaimed to each one of the buyers of the numbered lots. We don't know, because it was not recited, exactly what they received, but apparently negotiations went on for two years, so it was, it was something that had been worked out. But they made an exception. The Hilliards refused to quitclaim their rights to number fifty-three and number sixty-five. Those were the lots that Lidle had been given in exchange for his making available the land. We don't know exactly, but I suspect that some years later, Lidle and the Murphy heirs came to some kind of terms. But clearly, they were not letting him off the hook very easily. What can we learn from this? Well, prior to twenty-ten, I have counted ten histories of Murfreesboro that have been written, the story of Murfreesboro, history of Murfreesboro, and none of those ten ever mentioned what strikes me as a rather significant aspect of our history, the mistake that was made. Since twenty-ten, it's been written about several times. You'll find it in a couple of my books. But maybe that's a little bit of reassurance for you people, because if you do make a mistake of some consequence, your grandchildren or your great-grandchildren will never hear about it, unless, of course, some historian comes along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I also want to recognize, we have Ms. Nancy Rainier who's here today. Nancy serves on our school board ably with many other people who do a fine job representing Murfreesboro. So Nancy, thank you for being here tonight. All right. We have one more ceremonial item. I think Mr. Whitaker wanted the podium.
Mayor, members of the council, probably wondering what I'm doing up here tonight. See if I can get some help. I'd like to talk to you about census for just a few moments. We, we have, I want it, Vanna, where I have tight budget. We had sent out three mailers, and we have had a good response, not a great response, but a good response. The, about fifty percent of our citizens have responded to us, so we have to have our total count in by March first. That is worth, to us and our citizens, about two million dollars. All we have to do is count the number of people that is living in the city of Murfreesboro, and prove to the state that those people live here, and we get roughly a hundred and fifteen bucks a person from the state. It helps keep our taxes down. We can use that to build roads. It's a good, good thing. So, I'm here before you tonight to tell you I've found myself kind of dilemma, and I need some help. Need the help from the citizens. So I got to thinking, who could I call? So I called the fire department. I said, "I called the fire department." And they responded, as they always do. Now it's time for us to start going door-to-door. Vanna would've been much better. So now it's time for us to go door-to-door, and we're gonna do that. But the one thing I want our citizens to know is the only people that will be coming door-to-door will be the fire department in uniform knocking on your door to get you to help us with our census. Now while we're doing all this, our fire chief decided to take opportunity, and they love fire safety, they love protecting our citizens, so I'm gonna let him talk a little bit about what they're gonna do when they go door-to-door. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Our firefighters started last Saturday with the door-to-door campaign, and as part of this, we're actually handing out a flyer to all of our citizens, as well as offering to do any kind of home inspection that they want us to, answering any questions about home fire safety, and using the opportunity to put in smoke alarms for our citizens that need that. And so, we're taking this opportunity, not just to get census information and numbers, but those, our citizens that were contacted, using this opportunity to also increase our fire safety. In conjunction with the state Fire Marshal's Office and the American Red Cross as part of the census as well, there's a certain area of our city that the state Fire Marshal's Office has deemed as a high-risk area, based on age of homes, the age of the people that live there, and, as well as other demographic data and historical fire data, that they use to determine that area. We're actually in that area on February the third, gonna do a canvas of the entire area, not just going through the addresses where we need census information, but going through every address, or every house in that area, to determine if they need smoke alarms and pass along that fire safety information. So it's a, it's a huge thing for us, and we're very happy, and I just want to tell you how proud I am of our firefighters for the job that they've already done since Saturday. We've increased our numbers tremendously just since Saturday, and we are, we're gonna go out and get the census accomplished for the city and for the citizens, and to bring in the revenue that we're missing out on by having an inaccurate population count.
Chief, just so the, the public understands, because I do know there's some scams going on in Rutherford County right now, especially with phones, but, but even from door-to-door, we're not asking for anything other than the citizens' names of the people who live in that house.
Yes.
And so, so if somebody comes to your door asking for anything other than that, please be very prudent.
Yes, and it will be a firefighter that will be either in a fire truck, or one of our other marked fire vehicles, that will be coming to your door, and no one else, that will be coming to gather that information, as well as deliver safety messages from our department.
Yes, sir. Y'all came by my house last Sunday, and there was a huge fire truck in front of the house, and one of my neighbors came over and said, "What's going on?" And I said, "Have you turned your census papers in?" And ironically, he hadn't, even though I had advised him to do so on multiple occasions. And so, so the fire department was very effective at gathering that information. So you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief, I want to make just one quick comment. I guess it was Friday night, a week or so ago, it was the coldest night that we had had so far. It was snowing and sleeting outside, and one of the homes in our neighborhood caught on fire. And so, all of our, the neighbors are seeing the fire truck, and so we look out. So, long story short, we end up walking out, and it's a home's, home caught on fire. It was the first time that I really had gotten to see firsthand how professional our Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department, our police officers, our emergency service providers, as far as Rutherford County, the emergency management services. But I just wanted you, the residents, to hear firsthand, you know, they were there until the wee hours of the morning with a truck in front of the house to make sure that the house didn't start back up, and then were patrolling back and forth that entire next day, making sure that the family, that their belongings were okay. They took tarps off and covered the, the family's furniture up, and that's all the things that were above and beyond what they, what they had to do, but what they would do for any home. So, just want to say thank you for, for what they did.
Thank you. I'm very proud of them as well. Thank you.
All right. I thought you were gonna say that you hadn't filled out your census, and that was gonna be some fun. So you have a consent agenda in front of you. You have several items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added or removed to the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, can we get a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You have the minutes for the November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, regular meeting, the December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, regular meeting, the January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, special meeting for the CIP, and the two thousand, excuse me, the January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, meeting for public comment.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now consider for passage on first reading, ordinance eighteen oh zero one, amending the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget, and this is the second amendment.
Yes, Mayor, this, we bring these periodically when we're increasing expenditures, so this, this is something you would need to approve before we could go ahead and pay bills that might be associated with this particular project.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution seventeen RPH sixty-one adopted by the city council on December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of the plan of services for an annexation of one point seven acres, and, two, the zoning of approximately point six seven acres along Franklin Road to Commercial Fringe CF District, which had been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Veterans Commons GP and Gee and Gotham and Jack Patel applicants, two thousand and seventeen dash five eighteen, two thousand and seventeen dash four forty-one. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor McFarland and council members. Our first planning and commission recommendation coming before you tonight is for an annexation request that we received, and it's for property that's located along the north side of Franklin Road, and it showed on the illustration before you. The study area not only includes that one parcel, which is approximately one point seven, one, which is approximately point six seven acres, but also includes three hundred and fifty linear feet of Highway ninety-six right-of-way. So the right-of-way plus the parcel is approximately one point seven acres in size. We received a petition for annexation, property owner for this parcel that's identified in orange, and we have prepared a plan of services outlining what services the city can provide, and detailing a timeframe for when those can be provided. It appears from the plan of services that we'll be able to provide city services in a reasonable time, as the property develops. Currently, there are single-family homes on this property that are utilized as rental property. However, the next item is to consider a zoning change, where we expect that the use will change as well. Sanitary sewer is not immediately available to the property, meaning it's not on or contiguous with the property. It will be brought across Veterans Parkway from the Kroger property. You have the plan of services, the planning commission's recommendation is for you to approve the property. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Green? We'll need to conduct a public hearing for the plan of services, excuse me, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on plan of services for an annexation of approximately one point seven acres located along Franklin Road. So this is for the plan of services and the annexation. Before we open our public hearing, just a few things that we ask for when you speak. If you'll keep all comments directed to the city council. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing an individual, you'll have three minutes. We will get all the questions answered at the end of the public hearing, after it's closed. If you will, keep all your comments to the staff. Please make sure when you come up to the podium, if you'll state your name and address. All right. Anyone wishing to speak for this plan of services and the annexation, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for adoption resolution seventeen RPH sixty-one to adopt a plan of services for approximately one point seven acres along Franklin Road, Veterans Commons GP applicant two thousand and seventeen dash five one eight.
Move for approval of plan of services.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now consider for adoption resolution seventeen RA sixty-one to annex approximately one point seven acres along Franklin Road, and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Veterans Commons GP applicant two thousand and seventeen dash five one eight.
Move for adoption.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately point six seven acres along Franklin Road, is Commercial Fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation, Gotham and Jack Patel applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you again. This is the companion zoning change request for the annexation petition and plan of services which you just considered for adoption, and it's for the one parcel located along the north side of Franklin Road, just west of the intersection of Veterans Parkway with Franklin Road. And you can see the property is highlighted in the map before you, and that's approximately point six seven acres in size. The subject property is within the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, in its zone for medium-density residential. The request before you is to own the property CF, that's Commercial Fringe District, simultaneous with the annexation. The, the property is, the proposed zoning of CF is consistent with the recommendation from our future land use map and our comprehensive plan. The future land use map does recommend that this develop with auto-urban, general commercial character, and as that being the most appropriate use for the property. The, you may have read in our staff comments that staff and planning commission had some concerns with the annexation of one very small parcel that currently has a single-family home on it, and because it wouldn't be able to meet our minimum standards for landscaping, parking, setbacks, and those types of design that we see of commercial property, it was told that, to us, that the intent was to combine this with some other parcels. There are five other parcels currently in the city zone, Commercial Fringe District, and those are actually on the corner, and just to the north of the property. To alleviate those concerns, the property owners have committed to recording a subdivision plat that combines all five of these parcels into one parcel. And if the properties were combined into one parcel, they would be large enough to support a commercial development. And so it would be our recommendation that if you do decide to zone this CF simultaneous with annexation, that we hold up that second reading until the subdivision plat's recorded. I know that they are making good faith efforts. They've already submitted the plat for planning commission to review, and they received comments from the planning commission. They've submitted this plat to Rutherford County Planning Department, because the property is currently in Rutherford County, and they're, at this time, working on preparing comments and sending it back to them. So, the other properties are zone CF, which is Commercial Fringe District. It doesn't allow quite as intense uses at the CH District, so it's pulled back a little bit. If you do decide to approve this, I will, as I mentioned, planning commission recommended that we hold off on second reading until that plat's recorded, and the applicants have indicated that they're fine with that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing regarding the zoning change. I will mention they've submitted a concept plan, but that's just to give you an idea. Nobody's reviewed it or approved it, but just to give you an idea that they intend to remove those single-family homes and develop it with commercial uses.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. Anyone wishing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading, ordinance seventeen oh Z sixty-one, a zoning area located along Franklin Road, is Commercial Fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation, two thousand and seventeen dash four forty-one.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution seventeen RPH sixty-two adopted by the city council on December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately twelve point one acres in the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Fortress Boulevard, parcel F of Victory Station, PUD, Swanson Development LP applicant, two thousand and seventeen dash four forty-four. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Bonley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next public hearing tonight is in the Victory Station, PUD, located along the west side of Fortress Boulevard, just south of Lazarus Way in the Victory Point subdivision. Victory Point is a part of the Victory Station, PUD as well. The Victory Station, PUD, was originally approved by the city council in two thousand, and this particular area of the PUD has remained undeveloped since then. It was zoned in two thousand for a hundred and seventy-six multifamily residential dwelling units. In two thousand and fifteen, a assisted living development had contemplated building on this property, and so the property, the PUD was amended to accommodate the assisted living facility on this parcel. The assisted living facility then decided to develop the property directly to the south, and you may have seen that, the crossings of Victory Station, which, if it's not complete already, is very near completion on the property to the south. So, Mr. Swanson was left with this, what's called parcel F, zoned specifically for assisted living, when the property to the south was already zoned for assisted living and developed with assisted living. And so, Mr. Swanson, knowing that the original developer of this parcel, when it was amended in two thousand and fifteen to develop assisted living, no longer had an interest in the property, has now made an application to amend the planned development, to kind of revert it back to what it was from two thousand to two thousand and fifteen. But it's kind of, it's a little bit of a hybrid between what was approved in two thousand and what was approved in two thousand and fifteen, in order to provide him a little bit more flexibility. So, he's looking to expand the uses so that not only assisted living would be permitted there, which is what's currently permitted, but to also allow multifamily residential uses as well, including apartments and uses as well, including apartments and for sale units such as condominiums or townhomes. The density would stay the same at 176 units. From 2000 to 2015, it was approved for 176 multifamily units. In 2015, when it was rezoned for assisted living, it remained at 176 units. And now, when he's looking to broaden the list of uses, the maximum density would remain 176 dwelling units. As a planned development, the architecture, there would be controls on the architecture and other facets of the development. Because Mr. Swanson does not have a specific buyer in mind for this property, what he's trying to do is to set specific development parameters so that when a buyer does come through, the buyer will know exactly what he has to work with. And that includes architecture and other commitments. For example, the buildings along the west and north perimeter, which are adjacent to single-family residential subdivisions, would be limited to two stories in height. Mr. Mulchan, in a moment, will go over the, will go over the other commitments that the applicant is making. There was a neighborhood meeting held on this request on November 14 that the applicant hosted at the Blackman Community Center. Planning commission conducted a public hearing on this request to amend the PUD and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, but I'd like to invite Mr. Rob Mulchan with SEC representing Mr. Swanson to come up and make a PowerPoint presentation that he has prepared for you.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the council. Rob Mulchan, SEC, here tonight on behalf of Mr. Joe Swanson Jr. and Swanson Developments to present to you the amendment for parcel F. We'll give you a little quick little background on the property itself. As you can see, the property is actually along the western side of Fortress Boulevard, just south of Lazarus Way. You can see across the street is a Baptist church. Also across the street is also the parcel T, which is the townhome development you saw recently this past year on that side. To the northeast of the property is the crossings apartment complex. And then you have single-family residential to the north with Victory Point and to Falconer Square to the west, and undeveloped residential, or undeveloped properties to the south and east. Zoning, as you can see, the, most of the properties to the north, south, and to the east are all PUD. That's all part of the Victory Station master pud. To the east, to the west of the property is all single-family residential zoning. Regards to the future land use, this, the future land use plan calls for the, this area to be part of what they call the urban auto or a commercial general category. That more or less pertains to a commercial element, big boxes and other elements like that in regards to commercial retail-type facilities. What we're proposing in regards to the amendment tonight goes against what the land use recommends, but we're actually moving towards a more like a MF land use, which would be a multifamily auto-urban category in the land use plan on that side, which we believe is a better use of the property in regards to these apartments and/or townhomes in regards to creating a change in the framework between the commercial element and the single-family, so more or less a step-down element between the commercial uses on the corner, which, okay, the gas station, the Tiger Mart right now, and these single-family residences on that side. Couple of quick photos of the site itself. This is looking into the property from Fortress. This is roughly where the main entrance to development would be located. This is looking back across from the backside of the property towards Fortress. As you can see, the property is mainly open grass areas with some pockets of trees. This is the entrance to Victory Point. This is on Lazarus Way, so you can see what some of the existing single-family homes are to the north side. And this is Garcia Boulevard, which is part of Falconer Square, which is the residential, single-family residential development to the west side of the property. And this is a picture of the Baptist church across the street. This is a view of the assisted living facility that was once at point, at point in time deemed to be on this property, parcel F, but moved to parcel E on the south side, and is very near completion. And this is the Cross Creek Apartments that it's off to the northeast of the property on the other side of Fortress. Little, little history of the property. As you can see, in 2000, parcel F was located there in the blue on the northern portion of this, as you can see in the plan. And then in 2015, we came back and amended that to more of a, for the use of the assisted living, independent living facility. As you can see here, a close-up of what the two diagrams in regards to how the multifamily component laid out in 2000, you can see the apartment complexes, more or less a lot of the structures uptight and close to the property lines on the, on the west and north, and then a central focus on some smaller buildings. And then in 2015, you can see the conceptual layout for what was going to be at that point in time, the assisted independent living facility. So you can see the difference in the character of the two developments. And then moving forward to today's plan, as you can see, we're back to looking at this from a standpoint of opening up the options of merging both of the plans from 2000, 2015 for the entitlement process of this property. As Matthew alluded to, Mr. Swanson doesn't have a buyer at this time, but we're willing to revert the land back to the original intent that it was for 15 years in regards to being a multifamily part, portion of the overall Victory Station development on that side. So as Matthew talked about, we have consistently since 2000 kept this at 176 units, so we have not changed the density, whether it was from what it was back in 2000, whether that be the assisted living facility, or moving forward with potentially apartments or townhomes on this property, we'll stay with 176 units it was originally approved for on that. Well, moving forward, you're looking at this 176 units being about 15 dwelling units to the acre. These will be for either rent or for sale, so either apartments, townhomes, or condominiums. The overall character of the property will be vehicular, private vehicular areas surrounding the residential structures, and all utilities will be underground. As for the units to be sold, as Matthew talked about, part of this pattern book that we're bringing forth is that part of this amendment will incorporate also the, more or less the entitlements for what our architectural standards would be for any development that comes through, whether that be multifamily, commercial, I'm sorry, multifamily or assisted living, independent living type facilities on that side. So buildings will be roughly two or three stories in height, 45-foot height maximums on those. The, along the western and northern perimeters, we're only permitting two-story, two-story structures on those in order to help match the single-family character of the homes along those boundaries on that side. We're looking at a minimum 640 square feet of living space, whether that be the apartment or townhome or independent living or assisted living facility. And then these will also be mixtures of one, two, or three-bedroom units. Again, architecturally, we're setting forth that we'll have multiple facets to the elevations on these structures, so that there is not a long unabated wall on that side, so we have a lot of good architectural character and quality. Long uninterrupted faces of the building. They'll all have eaves and architectural accents of the building entrances. Building materials, we're going to, you know, make certain this is a little quality development, not only from the planning standpoint, architecturally, we're using mainly makesenary-type products, cement fiber boards, cement fiber shakeboards, brick or stone or fauxstone in regards to those materials. The only vinyl that we've permitted will be permitted in the trim and soffit areas of the units. Regards to setbacks on the property, along Fortress Boulevard, we're looking at decreasing our front setback from 40 feet to 30 foot in order to pull the buildings up in regards to kind of matching the character of the existing structures along the road. Along the southern boundary of this property, and I'll talk a little bit more about this here in a couple of slides down the road, is a newly proposed roadway connection, a local road connection along the southern boundary that will allow for access not only to this site, but also to the undeveloped properties to the southwest of this parcel. And that'll be a 20-foot setback on that as from a structure standpoint. Then along the rear, which was the western and northern boundaries, we're looking at incorporating at 30 foot, so we're, you know, increasing our setbacks to 30 feet from 25 on that side. And to go along with and part of that 30 foot, we're incorporating a type D buffer, so a 20-foot wide type D buffer that, you know, I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a couple of slides down the road. So that's more or less giving us a good visual barrier between this development and the existing homes. Looking at this type D buffer will incorporate a double-stagger row of evergreen materials along with a, one single row of shrubs to kind of interlace with the evergreen trees themselves to help fill in any gaps that are out there. Currently, the property does have, as part of the original 2000 approval for this, Mr. Swanson and Swanson Developments did go through back in 2000 and actually planted and established a landscape buffer along these boundaries, the west and north. Since then, those have grown in, but there's a few spaces and pockets where the materials have either died away. So we're going to come back and as part of this project, go back and reestablish that buffer and make certain that it is fully up to the type D buffer that we're talking about tonight. And you can see a couple of the different vegetation types in regards to these trees that we'll be installing in that buffer. As part of this development, we talked about this being, merging the two different types of uses that have been approved in this previously. In our neighborhood meetings, some of the discussions with the neighbors from Falconer Square and Victory Point was that if this moved forward as, in the future, as a multifamily type component, that they wanted an extra level of barrier security kind of backyard kind of feel. So we've gone through in part of this plan that is if this moves forward as a multifamily development down the future, it will come forward with a six-foot tall PVC or wooden fence, privacy fence, along that western and northern boundary of the property to help give a little extra barrier between our two developments on that side. But if it comes forward as an independent living or assisted living facility, this would not be incorporated, it'd just be the type D landscape buffer that goes along with that. Amenities, we're talking about in regards to looking at this from the standpoint of clubhouse-type feature with a pool on that side, and also possibly a pet park. And also incorporated, you know, in regards to the, if this was an assisted living facility, they do include a bunch of internal amenities such as a cafe, a library, or a lounge for a computer lounge area on that side, but also walking trails and of course, the pet park for their pets on that side. Access, we're looking at initially the main access being off of Fortress. This will line up with the recently approved parcel T townhome development across the streets. That'll be, the two main entrances will line up in conjunction on that. And I spoke a little earlier about the newly proposed road, and working with staff on this proposal on this was that staff felt that there was a need to incorporate a new connection between the vacant parcels that are funded only onto Highway 96 to our southwest of parcel, parcel F. So as part of our development package this time around, we've gone through and incorporated a 40-foot right-of-way to bring forth a new local street connection, which will also be our secondary access point into this development. So as you can see on this, we've got two different entrances on this conceptual rendering of what we're looking at if it was an apartment-type complex. The, you can see there's two different color shadings on this roadway itself. The pink shading that's right off of Fortress will be developed by the developer of parcel F, so that allows for our secondary access point into the property in regards to fire safety, but also access in regards to any residents and the residential uses that are used on that. The blue portion, you can see extending back to the property to the west, that will be built by the developer of the lands to the, undeveloped lands to the west. So as that development comes onboard, those, that developer will be, will be responsible for installing that segment of the roadway for the standpoint of connection. Staff felt it was important to have this extra leg of connectivity in regards to those vacant properties that are only front on Franklin Road, giving this a secondary point of ingress egress to those properties back out to Fortress on that side. I appreciate your time, consideration of the proposal in front of you, and I'm available for any comments now or after the public hearing. I do want to bring forth a, we would like to ask for deferral tonight on this matter in regards to kind of waiting for the new ordinance, townhome ordinance that's going through right now. We feel that in talking with staff, that it'd be best to kind of wait for that ordinance to go through, to kind of let it go through and get approved first before moving forward this application. But we felt it was important, since we already advertised for the public hearing tonight, to have this public hearing tonight, let the public speak. We would like to move forward with the deferral motion tonight until that ordinance is fully passed by the council on that side so that we're in conjunction with that. So that's our request tonight on that side. But like I said, I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blomshaw. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this planned unit development change, please come to the podium.
Mayor McFarland, council, staff, Joe Swanson, 1188 Park Avenue. I want to speak in agreement with what Mr. Blomley and Mr. Mulchan have displayed here for this project. Just want to remind you that this was approved for 15 years. We just want to revert it back to what it was with some additional improvements with the roadway and some upgrade on the landscaping. I'll be available for questions if you have any at the end of the public hearing. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Rod Rogers, I live at 407 Carmel Drive. Some additional considerations for this parcel. Directly across the street, it's been mentioned here, there is a high-density townhome community that is approved, not built yet. Directly across, or right next to it, is already a high-density apartment complex. Plus, we have the assisted living high-density facility just to the east of this parcel. So we have a lot of high-density going in, in a very small area, becoming very compact. Another thing is, they continually talk about how we're going back to what it was. It was approved for apartments. We're going back to approving to apartments. But what we're not talking about is the fact that where the assisted living facility is now was not originally for, approved for living facilities. It was originally a strip mall, I believe. So we now have additional living space been built in there. So it's not just going back to what it was. We are adding to the density of the area, something that hasn't been mentioned here. Please consider those things as you make your decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right. Seeing none, we'll, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ 62 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 12.1 acres in the planned unit development PUD District located along Fortress Boulevard, parcel F of Victory Station PUD, 2017-444. Move for deferral. Motion a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. This item's been deferred. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH 63 adopted by the city council on December 14, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 8.46 acres along Manson Pike and Brinkley Road from local commercial district to Commercial Fringe District. Cherrick Patel, 2017-442. Notice this said public hearing was published in the January 9, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing is for the rezoning of 8.46 acres located at Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to be rezoned from CL to CF. This property was annexed back in 2006, and because it was zoned commercial in Rutherford County when it was annexed, it was zoned commercial local as our zoning ordinance prescribes when there's no companion zoning request. There was no companion zoning request when the property came in, so it was given that automatic commercial local designation. The property is undeveloped except for one single-family residence, and the owners have requested the rezoning to Commercial Fringe. Directly to the south and to the west of the subject property is a PRD called Blackman Station that was actually approved last year for townhomes and single-family residential development. Further to the south is zoned Commercial Fringe, and there's a self-storage development that has been developed on that property. And then across Brinkley Road, there is land that's zoned Commercial Fringe, developed with several commercial uses, including a Dollar General and a Subway. And then right at the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley, directly adjacent to this property, is a piece of property zoned Commercial Fringe that's developed with a convenience market slash gas station and a couple of tenant spaces in that little shopping center. Across the street, we, just recently, there was a rezoning approved directly behind the Blackman Community Center, an annexation and a rezoning for a development called Blackman, Blackman Village, which is a single-family detached homes that'll be is a single-family detached homes that'll be on one lot of record and sold as a part of a horizontal property regime. This request comes before you today because commercial fringe has a wider, or allows a greater variety of uses in some respect than commercial local. Not quite to the commercial highway magnitude that we would see in the most intense commercial areas. But commercial fringe does allow some uses that are not permitted in the commercial local zone, such as department or discount stores and neighborhood shopping centers. In the commercial local zone, multi-tenant retail buildings cannot be any greater than 20, 25,000 square feet, and the commercial fringe zone would allow for multi-tenant retail buildings to be greater than 25,000 square feet. The commercial fringe zone, though, does have some regulations, some protections, if you will, for, for the area that the commercial local zone does not have. For example, there are increased side and rear building setbacks and separation requirements from adjacent residential uses from dumpsters, drive-up windows associated with restaurants, and gas pumps. So, there are some protections in the CF zone that the CL zone does not have. In addition, the CL zone is kind of an outdated hybrid zone that, that we really don't see used very often anymore because it does allow some residential uses such as traditional single-family detached homes, duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. The CF zone would allow, or is a little bit more of a, of an updated zoning district as opposed to the CL zone, which is a little bit antiquated. The 2035 future land use map, and I'll put that up on the screen now, shows the property to be developed as general commercial, with Manson Pike being a major arterial. Of course, right here, it's only three lanes, but it is on our major transportation plan to be improved to five lanes at some point in the future, with it being a major arterial and at a major intersection with Brinkley Road, and Brinkley Road being in our capital improvement plan to be, to be improved to a three-lane cross-section within the next three years. It does recommend general commercial for this, for this corner. General commercial would be most, would correspond most greatly with commercial highway, but the applicants have requested commercial fringe, which actually is a little bit less intense than what the, than what the 2035 plan recommends. But in general, the proposed request is consistent with the future land use map of the 2035 plan. With that being said, the, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on December 6, and unanimously voted to recommend to you approval of this rezoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions, Mr. Blomley? All right, thank you, Mr. Blomley.
I got a quick question. Do you happen to know why? Was the same owner asked for it to be commercial local, and why was it commercial local originally? Do you happen to know?
Yeah, the property was zoned commercial in the county, and it was annexed, I believe the current owner did not own it when it was annexed. It was zoned commercial in the county, and when it was annexed, there was no simultaneous zoning request when it was annexed. And so, our zoning ordinance says that if it's zoned commercial in the county and it comes in without a zoning request, it automatically is zoned commercial local. And so, it's been sitting with that interim commercial local zoning classification since it was annexed in 2006, and-
It was a separate owner?
Yeah, I believe that was, I believe it was owned by the Meadow family back in 2006, and the current owners have purchased it within the last several years, I believe.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion. I don't know if you remember, Mr. Blomley, but if I remember, this was one of the first convenience markets came through that we had the upgraded gas canopies. So, there was a lot of discussion on that, that gas canopy that's there, there now.
And, and Ms. Green has done a great job over the last 10 years being a protector of our gas canopies as they've come through.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ63, rezoning an area along Manson Pike, Brinkley Road to commercial fringe, CF District 2017-442.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH64 adopted by the City Council on December 14, 2017, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately four-point acres along Burntnob Road and Veterans Parkway from single-family residential, single-family residential 15, RS15 District to Highway Commercial CH District. Prashant Patel, applicant 2017-446, notes this said public hearing was published in the January 9, 2000 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This property actually came before you in early November for a public hearing and was denied. The property is located at the southeast corner of Burntnob Road and Veterans Parkway. It was one of the additional parcels that was annexed with the West Park property in early to mid 2017, and this is another one of those situations where there was no zoning request simultaneous with annexation. But this property was zoned residential in the county, and so it came in with an automatic zoning classification of RS15 when it was annexed. Property is just a little under 4.8 acre, or a little under five acres and contains one existing single-family residence that's used for rental purposes. The applicants are requesting rezoning to commercial highway. The property directly to the south was rezoned to commercial highway earlier this, or excuse me, last year. It's the Hord McCullough property, and the applicants followed suit with a rezoning request to commercial highway for their property as well. The 2035 plan recommends that the property develop as business park, which is an office classification. But as we've discussed in the past, the business park zoning, or the business park land use recommendation appears to be a little bit outdated, and I think in the near future, we're going to start working on compiling some amendments to the 2035 plan for the planning commission to consider for the areas that we feel that, just in the, just in the short time since the plan's been adopted, that conditions have changed. 2035 plan is a living document, and we expect during its lifespan that, that we will see amendments to it. But at any rate, staff feels that the, that the business park classification is, is really no longer applicable because of the, the changing dynamics of the area due to the impending development of the West Park. Now, a little bit more history about this application. Back in September of 2017, the applicants made the request to have the property rezoned to commercial highway. The planning commission recommended that, unanimously recommended its approval. It went to the City Council on November 2. Staff recommended to the applicant that he record identical restrictive covenants to the Hord and McCullough family directly to the south. He did with the exception of four uses, and those four uses were packaged beer stores, discount beer and tobacco stores, liquor stores, and laundromats. And at that, at the city council first reading, the city council voted to deny the request. The day after the city council public hearing, the applicant called me and, you know, asked what his next step should be. He was willing to modify the restrictive covenants to add those four uses that he was not willing to prohibit at that time, and in your agenda materials is a revised set of restrictive covenants that does include the four uses as prohibited uses that he declined to put in that document back in November. So, the list of uses that are proposed to be prohibited on this property is identical to the list of uses that the Hords and McCulloughs recorded for their property. And so, because the applicant was willing to move forward in, in revising those proposed restrictive covenants, staff felt that, that would, that that would be enough to warrant staff waiving the 18-month waiting period for him to reapply to the planning commission and the city council for rezoning of his property. The planning commission then held a public hearing on the request on December 6, and they had access to the revised restrictive covenants, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the, of the rezoning request to commercial highway. And so, the applicant brings forth this request to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this request before or after the public hearing. The applicant, Mr. Prashant Patel, is in the audience if you have any questions for him.
Matthew, I know that in the restrictive covenants, it has a comment that says, you know, a list of things that are not permitted, and one of those things is a packaged beer store. But with, in parentheses, it has not including beer sales that are accessory to another type of permitted retail use such as a grocery store or convenience market. Is that exactly how the Hords restrictive covenant is written, or is this different?
I believe that's the same. I can't say for certain, but that was, I believe he put that in there at my suggestion because the, I didn't think the goal would be to, to prohibit a use such as a convenience store or a grocery store that might sell beer incidentally to, to the, to their use. So, I believe it's identical, Mr. Smotherman. I'm not 100% certain, though.
I apologize for not asking earlier before the meeting.
What differentiates that from, you know, when I've seen a store that's, you know, it's kind of says beer and tobacco? Is that considered a convenience store? Like, you know, what, you got the big sign, beer, tobacco sign? Is that a convenience store, or is that a, is that a packaged beer store?
Yeah, we actually, we actually have a classification in the zoning ordinance called packaged beer store, or beer comma packaged, I think, to be specific. And I think that if the majority of the stock and trade is, is beer and tobacco, it would fall into that packaged beer category. And I think that the applicant, you know, one of the uses he's proposing to prohibit is packaged beer, and I think he calls out discount beer and tobacco, too. So, I think if the, if the beer sales are accessory to, to other retail sales, like at a convenience market, for example, where they've got all sorts of different things in there, that, that would not fall into the packaged beer category. But if beer was the predominant thing that they were selling, then that would.
Thank you, Ms. Blomley.
All right, one question, Mr. Blomley. Where does this property, what road access does this property have? Where's the, where's the frontage? It looks like there's an RS15.
It's got frontage on Burntnob Road and on Veterans Parkway. It's got a long strip of frontage on Veterans Parkway, and-
What is that RS15 stuck in there, then? What is, what is that?
That, that's just the right-of-way of Veterans Parkway. It's just a mapping anomaly. So, yeah, the, so-
It's right on the corner, then?
Right, it's right on the corner of Veterans and Burntnob.
Okay.
And then there is one parcel that is, it's another five-acre parcel in between this property and the park property. It's zoned RS15. I think the landowner there is kind of biding his time, trying to figure out what to do with his property. But you're correct, it is, it is directly bordering Veterans and-
RS15 is just the right-of-way?
Right, right. A label for the right-of-way.
Okay. After no other questions, we'll need to open, or excuse me, conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ64, rezoning an area along Burntnob Road and Veterans Parkway to Highway Commercial CH District 2017-446. Mr. Blomley, my main question, is this consistent with what we've done? I think we've had Mr. McDonald's property that was on the interchange, the Hord property. Is this consistent with what we've done with those?
Yes, sir. They both requested commercial highway zoning. Mr. McDonald actually restricted fewer uses out of his property. Of course, he's across the interstate from the West Park property. So, this particular parcel and the Hord McCullough property are actually more heavily restricted than the, than the McDonald property. And, but to answer your question, yes, yes, sir, it is consistent.
I'll make a comment, and then I'll make a motion. I think it's appropriate for us to be consistent on this, and I'm glad that they brought it back the way they brought it back. I'll also say, though, that I'm, would, would raise a little concern about the comments you've made about changing the land use map and that sort of thing. We only get, we only get a few shots at having a place to have a business park, where there's a lot of green grass to start anew and have an opportunity for a big, you know, corporate headquarters types projects to come in here. And I think what I'm hearing you say is because we allowed the other people to, to rezone to these different areas, that now the map should change, and it really isn't what it used to be. And so, now we're completely out of that entire big blue spot that used to be a good spot for good, high-paying jobs potentially to come down here, you know, to come here in the future. And so, now that is gone forever. And so, I think we need to be aware of that and, you know, try to be a little more forward-looking as it relates to those kinds of opportunities. But at this point, I think we're down the road, so I'll make a move, a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the planning commission, a mandatory referral along Raglan Avenue, and a mandatory referral along Mary Beth Court.
Bear with me just a moment, Mayor, as I pull this up. All right, we've got a couple of right-of-way abandonments to consider tonight. The first one is at the eastern terminus of Raglan Avenue. Last year, the city council approved a rezoning for a PRD at the end of Raglan Avenue called Walker Station. It was for 23 single-family detached homes on one lot of record to be sold as part of a horizontal property regime. The site plan was actually approved by the planning commission yesterday, subject to the council's approval of this mandatory referral request. You'll recall that the, that the PRD plan actually has houses proposed on where there is existing right-of-way for Raglan Avenue. And Raglan Avenue does not actually go all the way to the, to the eastern property line here. See, right there is where it's platted to, but right there is where it actually stops. So, what we're looking at doing is actually abandoning what's shown as right-of-way on our GIS maps, and then some other, what's platted right-of-way but does not show up on the GIS maps as a belts and suspenders approach, to just quick claim our interest in all of that platted right-of-way. We have no need for this right-of-way. It's right-of-way to nowhere right now. The property to the south is the MTSU Ballfields, and to the east are developed properties on City View Drive owned by the university. So, we conducted a right-of-way abandonment study, and really, the only impact is that there are some utility lines for Murfreesboro Water Resources Department and the Murfreesboro Electric Department that will need some utilities to be, or some easements to be recorded to accommodate those existing utilities. But other than that, we found no issues in abandoning this right-of-way, and staff would recommend its approval, and the planning commission on January 10 held a public hearing, and then unanimously voted to recommend its approval as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this mandatory referral for Raglan Avenue? Any questions on this mandatory referral for Raglan Avenue?
Move for approval of the abandonment.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our second mandatory referral tonight is for a portion of Mary Beth Court, and Mary Beth Court is a right-of-way that we annexed back in 2016, and only a portion of Mary Beth Court is actually constructed. Well, Mr. Taylor and his client, Mr. Conrad Camp, have submitted plans to develop this property with a single-family subdivision, and they want to rework the right-of-way of Mary Beth Court. There's nothing constructed in, you see the area colored in blue on the map before you, there's nothing constructed, no roadbed, no utilities, and they want to rework the cul-de-sac of Mary Beth Court. So, what they plan on doing is abandoning what's in blue, and then rerecording a new cul-de-sac for Mary Beth Court that will follow different right-of-way lines. We conducted a right-of-way abandonment study, and none of the departments found any issues with the abandonment of this right-of-way, so we would recommend approval of that. And the planning commission, after holding a public hearing, recommended approval also on January the 10th. The second part of this is an existing drainage easement that is in the purple color that runs to the west of Mary Beth Court. There's no infrastructure in this drainage easement, and there appears to be no reason to keep it with the applicant's new development plans. So, the planning commission also voted to recommend its abandonment on January the 10th. Be happy to answer any questions. No public hearing is required before the city council. We would recommend that you take both the right-of-way abandonment and the easement abandonment in separate motions.
Move for approval of the abandonment, Mary Beth Court.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have, Mr. Blomley, with your...
We need another motion, I think. Is that correct? We need a motion to approve the easement abandoned, to be, proposed drainage easement to be abandoned.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Blomley, with your, okay, we have a lot of referrals from the planning commission to schedule public hearings, so have worked with staff before this to give you sort of a breakdown on dates. So, if it's okay, I'm going to read the individual items and the dates that we're recommending, if that's okay. So, that way, you don't have to go through everything.
Sure, sure.
A, we have amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding Chart II and Chart II endnotes, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios pertaining to maximum gross density and open space requirements, and RSA Type II, RSA Type III zoning districts, Murfreesboro Planning Department applicant. I'm going to read through these, so that we will put the public notice, and then we'll go through letters on dates that will have those.
Yes, sir.
B, annexation for a plan of services for Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties, the applicant. C, zoning application for approximately 3.2 acres along South Church Street and Volunteer Road, Murfreesboro Medical Center applicant. D, zoning application for approximately 5.6 acres along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulfur Springs Road to amend the Northfield Village PCD, Scott Drum, the applicant. E, rezonate approximately 11.32 acres along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive from RS-15 to PCD, Williams Farms applicant. F, annexation of plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 2.5 acres along Memorial Boulevard, Cynthia Keithley is the applicant. G, the zoning application for approximately two acres along Memorial Boulevard to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation, Cynthia Keithley is the applicant. Annexation of plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane, Helen R. Luster is the applicant, that was H. I, zoning application for approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane to be zoned RSA Type II simultaneous with annexation, Catalyst Design Group is the applicant. J, annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 55 acres along Asbury Road, Joseph C. Smith and Ricky D. Smith is the applicant. K, zoning application for approximately 55 acres along Asbury Road to be zoned PUD simultaneous with annexation, Sazerac of Tennessee is the developer. L, amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding Section II, interpretation and definitions, Chart I, uses permitted by zoning district, and Chart IV, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use of regards to stilleries, City of Murfreesboro Planning Department applicant, 2017, 810. The first date that we have is February 22nd, but we need to notify, the 19th is President's Day, so our agendas are normally coming out on Monday afternoon, Tuesday-ish, so we need everyone to know that that agenda will probably be late on, if we have the public hearing on the 22nd. The reason we're recommending that is because we've got so many. So, we're recommending...
Mayor, I won't be here that week.
Okay. All right. Will everyone still, we still have a quorum? The 22nd was on a Thursday.
I'm here.
Is everybody, okay? All right, so Items A, D, E, and L were proposing for the 22nd.
Make a motion that we schedule public hearings for February 22nd for Items A, D, E, and L.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, Items B, C, F, G, H, and I, they're being recommended for March the 8th. And I want to go on record that that's my wife's birthday, so as I'm here, I will be in trouble that night.
March 8th.
March 8th. Okay, so that, Mr. Smotherman, that is B, C...
I got it, I got it.
Got it?
I'm ready to go.
All right, let's go.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, we schedule public hearings for March 8th for Items B, C, G, H, and I.
Also, F.
F. Second.
Okay.
Close.
Ms. Schreit, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Yeah.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, so now, for the 15th, so the next week, we're going to have D, excuse me, I'm sorry.
J and K.
We're basically going to have J and K, which we're expecting a turnout for J and K.
I ain't going to mess this one up. I'm going to make a motion for scheduled public hearings for March 15th for Items J and K.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Thinking I may be out of town on that date. That's not a good one for me.
Oh, yeah.
You're out of town on the 15th as well? Okay, well, can we have that motion...
Motion withdrawn.
Okay, let's look at...
Thought I couldn't mess it up.
All right.
March 22nd.
22nd.
Yeah, March the 26th.
No, the week after that is spring break.
Except for some of us that will be on spring break the 22nd. All right. I'd rather have it on the 15th. I can make some arrangements on the 15th. The 22nd, I cannot. I'll be in trouble. Well, I think you're not going to be here the 15th, right? So, let's do this. We may have a long meeting on the 8th, but let's, can we have everything that we need to have ready by the 8th? Mr. Whitaker?
[inaudible]
What's that?
[inaudible]
Yeah, I mean, it's either that, or we're going to have to...
J on one, K on the other.
I will make arrangements to be here on the 15th. I'm a little more flexible on the 15th than I am on the 22nd. Well, I think Kurt's not going to be here on the 15th, so, is there a way that we can, well, J and K are both companion zonings, right?
They go together.
Okay, so let's look.
Just do it on February 22nd.
Go to April?
Can we add them to February 22nd?
So, the options would be February 22nd, or having...
February 22nd would not work for J and K, because with there being an annexation, it would have to be at least 30 days out.
Okay, so our option would be either do March 8th, or we push all the way to April. And I don't know that...
[inaudible]
So...
Should we look at a special meeting, like the planning commission held?
I mean, if the council, if we're, I mean, I would be fine just holding that as a...
I'd rather stay late than have a special meeting myself, I mean.
Just push it back. It's going on into April, like April 12th or something.
It's, when is, either April 5th or April 12th.
I think the 5th is ours, spring break.
I won't be here on the 5th. Spring break, right?
12th.
So, April 12th it is. All right, can we have a motion for April the 12th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll consider recommendations of the transportation director. We have a professional service agreement with Neil Schaefer Incorporated for the Mercury Boulevard Sidewalk Project, a TDOT Transportation Alternative Program, TAP project.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Staff through TDOT's Competitive Transportation Alternative Program, which is called a TAP grant, submitted a proposal for sidewalk projects for the Mercury Boulevard from Broad Street to Middle Tennessee Boulevard. The intent of the project is to provide enhanced pedestrian safety. TAP grant funding provides for 80% of construction cost only. The city's responsibility includes 20% of the construction, as well as 100% cost of the PE NEPA, PE Design Utility Coordination, and right-of-way phases. TDOT awarded the city the grant request in July of 2017. The city council approved a contract with TDOT on August 10th, 2017. The project has been added to the NPO's FY 2017 through 2020 Transportation Improvement Plan. The city solicited proposals under the small purchase procedures as outlined in TDOT's local program development office. On August 18th, 2017, the engineering department received statements of qualifications and letters of interest from three consulting firms to perform NEPA preliminary design, final design, utility coordination, and bidding services for the Mercury Boulevard project. After reviewing the qualifications of each firm, as well as review of prior performance, the staff recommends Neil Schaefer to perform the desired services. Neil Schaefer is experienced with TDOT projects and currently is performing an own-call and engineering service contract for TDOT, as well as providing design and construction engineering services on the Rutherford Boulevard Adaptive Signal System. As you can see, the total federal fund is a little bit over a million dollars, one, a little bit over a million dollars. The local portion of that is $427,322, for a total of $1,454,500. On January the 4th, 2018, Neil Schaefer submitted a fee proposal to perform the desired services for the Mercury Boulevard project. Neil Schaefer's fee for these services is time and material not to exceed $149,320. Since funding for the PE and NEPA, PE Design Phases require all local support, the funding source would be through the city's, it should be 2018, 2022 instead of 2017, I think it was in y'all's letter, a capital improvement program. Staff recommends approval of the agreement between the city and Neil Schaefer for a time and material contract not to exceed $149,320. The project will be managed by the city of Murfreesboro. With that, I'll have, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
This is a much-needed improvement to Mercury Boulevard, and I look forward to seeing it completed. It'll certainly help the children around Bradley School and Patterson Park, and all those that use this quarter as access to the commercial businesses down towards Middle Tennessee Boulevard, as well as Broad Street, so it'll be an extreme asset to that community. So, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you all.
If, for some reason, Mr. Whitaker, if there is an issue with having it scheduled that late with the applicant, please let us know next week, and then if we have to make accommodations, we'll be happy.
Well, I'll be in touch with them, but that, there's actually a lot of moving parts to that one, and that will give staff time, as well as some of the property owners' time to work through some issues, so.
Okay.
I actually think it'll be okay, but I will definitely come back with you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Blomley, didn't mean to steal your thunder, but thank you for putting all that together.
You made it easy on me.
All right. All right, we'll consider recommendations of the transportation director. We have a professional service agreement with Neil Schaefer Incorporated for the Mercury Boulevard Sidewalk Project, a TDOT Transportation Alternative Program, TAP project.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Staff through TDOT's Competitive Transportation Alternative Program, which is called a TAP grant, submitted a proposal for sidewalk projects for the Mercury Boulevard from Broad Street to Middle Tennessee Boulevard. The intent of the project is to provide enhanced pedestrian safety. TAP grant funding provides for 80% of construction cost only. The city's responsibility includes 20% of the construction, as well as 100% cost of the PE NEPA, PE Design Utility Coordination, and right-of-way phases. TDOT awarded the city the grant request in July of 2017. The city council approved a contract with TDOT on August 10th, 2017. The project has been added to the NPO's FY 2017 through 2020 Transportation Improvement Plan. The city solicited proposals under the small purchase procedures as outlined in TDOT's local program development office. On August 18th, 2017, the engineering department received statements of qualifications and letters of interest from three consulting firms to perform NEPA preliminary design, final design, utility coordination, and bidding services for the Mercury Boulevard project. After reviewing the qualifications of each firm, as well as review of prior performance, the staff recommends Neil Schaefer to perform the desired services. Neil Schaefer is experienced with TDOT projects and currently is performing an own-call and engineering service contract for TDOT, as well as providing design and construction engineering services on the Rutherford Boulevard Adaptive Signal System. As you can see, the total federal fund is a little bit over a million dollars, one, a little bit over a million dollars. The local portion of that is $427,322, for a total of $1,454,500. On January the 4th, 2018, Neil Schaefer submitted a fee proposal to perform the desired services for the Mercury Boulevard project. Neil Schaefer's fee for these services is time and material not to exceed $149,320. Since funding for the PE and NEPA, PE Design Phases require all local support, the funding source would be through the city's, it should be 2018, 2022 instead of 2017, I think it was in y'all's letter, a capital improvement program. Staff recommends approval of the agreement between the city and Neil Schaefer for a time and material contract not to exceed $149,320. The project will be managed by the city of Murfreesboro. With that, I'll have, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
This is a much-needed improvement to Mercury Boulevard, and I look forward to seeing it completed. It'll certainly help the children around Bradley School and Patterson Park, and all those that use this quarter as access to the commercial businesses down towards Middle Tennessee Boulevard, as well as Broad Street, so it'll be an extreme asset to that community. So, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to bring you the revised Capital Improvement Program. It's a one-year plan totaling seventy million dollars. In the letter included in your agenda, there is a summary table. You'll see that this plan includes some routine vehicle and equipment replacement needs and those are just to maintain our current service levels. But what's exciting about the plan is it includes a number of investments in new technology for us and improvements to our public parks, facilities, many of our roadways and other infrastructure. The summary table, I'll just walk through some of the proposals, not each line item. With your approval, we have removed five million, two hundred and fifty thousand for the fiber government network and that's, not that we're deferring that program, we're just not far enough along in our discussions and plans to bring you a hard number with this one-year CIP. We've also removed the hotspot program funding because with your direction, we're gonna pay that out of fund balance and then all of the other reductions represent items that are being deferred for a future capital plan or proposed in our, for consideration in our two thousand nineteen budget. And then I would just like to turn it over to you if you have any questions.
I have one, a couple of things. The council, we've been working on this for some time, so thanks to staff for getting it where we are for two thousand seventeen, but we've had some good discussion over really the last couple of weeks specifically on how we handle construction projects within the city, which is a lot of what we're looking at. And we even had a lengthy discussion yesterday and we're gonna have some recommendations coming back from staff over the next several months, but really, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but really to change how we've handled construction projects within the city moving forward. We've really used the CIP plan, for instance, some of these projects that we have, you know, we've talked about the tail that comes after, like, the airport's a great example. You know, we've got four point seven million dollars in this first year, but we've got subsequent borrowings going on after that. So, what I have asked them, and really this is from also recommendations of Mr. Tyndall, Paul Boyer, the chief, Jennifer, on what happens in other municipalities, had a good discussion with Jim Bailey today with Johnson Bailey Architects that we need from a construction standpoint to have construction managers on the start of these projects and manage the projects from start to finish. It may not be feasible on every project, but that we are not tying up staff time managing projects when that's not what staff is necessarily trained to do. With that, the discussions we've had on projects that, having them available on the front end, that we know what that amount's gonna be, so when we go to bond issuance, if possible, we know what that amount is and we're borrowing that money at a finite number and not continuing to add at future bond issuances. So, I wanted to let y'all know that's gonna be coming down the pike on how we handle those. We're even talking, Chief Folks is working on our fire training facility, Doug's facility now, so that will give us the ability to hopefully get in a better spot with these construction projects that we know where we are in the beginning and where we are in the end, so. Any other questions?
I move we approve the CIP for two thousand eighteen.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution eighteen R zero two expressing official intent that certain expenditures should be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for the construction of the Library Technology Center to be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds and other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
This particular resolution is for, we already put four hundred thousand in the two thousand sixteen bond and we committed to do an additional two hundred thousand. The project has moved along to the point we were needing that money and since we have not borrowed yet, we need to do a refunding resolution so we can spend that money as the progress payments come in from the contractor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any beer permits?
Yes, sir, there are a few tonight. We have a special event, beer permit from the Kamari House for an event to happen on February thirteenth at the Grove at Williamson Place. That application is in order and we would issue that permit if you approve it tonight. Additionally, we have an ownership change and a name change for a convenience grocery market at one oh six Veterans Parkway. They have a background check that is in order, but they need to complete their building codes inspections. We have two convenience markets, one at twenty-three seventy-four O'Fort Parkway and one at three oh two West Northfield Boulevard that have had an ownership change. Those background checks are also in order and they also need to complete their building codes inspections. Additionally, we have an ownership change and name change for a new restaurant at five twenty-one Northwest Broad Street. The background checks are in order and they also need to finish their building codes inspections. If you approve those tonight, we will issue those permits once they complete their building codes inspections. And finally, we have a catering beer application for a location out of D and, I'm sorry, out of Nashville named D and D Events and they have met our catering requirements and that application could be issued if you approve it tonight. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
I have a board and commission appointment that really is just for a, for the next meeting, but also wanted to explain, I know several of us have gotten emails and letters and calls about different people who are wanting to serve on the Airport Commission. Wanted to let you know recommending Steve Waldron, who is our chair. Steve has been a valuable asset to the Airport Commission and also is right in the middle of the terminal project, but then also Ms. Gail Slotkey, who served for many years, and recommending reappointment of Ms. Slotkey and Bill serves on that commission, but- Those folks do a remarkable job. It is amazing, the experience and perspective, just to hear them talk through this. We're very fortunate to be able to have that kind of wealth of knowledge as we approach a project as big as, we're talking the new terminal. They have left no stone unturned and they cross every T and dot every I, so they do an excellent job and I get to listen. Well, Ms. Slotkey serves a valuable role too and has for years, but I think it's also trying to make sure that we keep diverse boards and, so we'll vote on that in the next meeting.
Any statements to be paid, Ms. Wright?
Not tonight.
Okay, I have a couple of things that we wanna, I've asked staff to brief us on. I don't think there's necessarily anything, right, a reason, Ms. Moody, to go over construction manager risk and those things, 'cause we'll, y'all will bring that back to us.
We will.
But, Mr. Tyndall, wanted to get an update on the downtown project.
Alright, we've been in contact with one of the developers that we had identified last time we had talked and right now, we propose to meet next week in an initial meeting and hopefully from that meeting to get a letter of intent put together and then bring the letter of intent back to council so they could see that the basic deal parameters from a very basic level. The intent is then to talk in more detail with them and work with the planning department and get more specifics and then prepare a development agreement that will be much more comprehensive in what the expectations are and what their obligations are. And then that should hopefully sixty, ninety days after this timeframe, that could come back to council and have a look at that, so. That's initially our timeframe. Some of that's gonna depend upon the developer and putting together their financing and their plans and things like that, so we have to, we still are in preliminary stages, but moving along.
Alright, last but not least, there's been a lot of discussion, watching the Parks and Recreation Commission the other day on naming, we've, namings, we've had a lot of discussion over the bridge. I have asked staff, just so y'all know, on the bridge, that we're gonna prepare a resolution to, I can't remember the lady's name who did the-
I think it's Jean Vest.
Jean Vest, yeah, that we are, with your approval, going to honorarily call the bridge Bridgie McBridgeface for one day, just as ceremonially for fifty to fifty-four hundred residents who did vote on that, so that's a good way we can do that. That'll be coming here as a proclamation that'll come across. But, you know, we've got a lot of very valuable city employees, people in the community that have done a lot and namings are always tough, so wanted to ask that, whether it be ballfields or some of those things that are coming across, that maybe we have a process that we start going through to at least have that discussion on how we do that.
Mayor, I couldn't agree more. I made the suggestion earlier tonight that it'd be called Blackman Park because that was a recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission. My recommendation previously had been naming it Legends Park and that's because we do have so many very important role models that have been in leadership positions as well as athletes and even sports commentators. Just, I'll name a few and I'm sorry, I'm gonna leave a ton of people out because I personally would like for, in the new park, that we consider naming the pavilions for Ray Duffy and Dennis Rainier. I would like some of our ballparks to carry the names of some of our athletes like Dennis Harrison, Kenny Gearhart, Chuck Taylor and Robert James, who have made it to the professional level and began as athletes in Murfreesboro. And the parking areas to bring back some of the names that we've lost in the past with our parks like Grantland Rice and, of course, Monty Hale and Dick Palmer, I think, are staple names that we think of in the history of Murfreesboro, who have been sportscasters, who, if we could have parking areas, maybe, I know there's a parking trail that is going through this or a walking trail that's going through this park and I think it would be great that not only will it be a phenomenal recreational facility and a facility for relaxation and enjoyment, but I think we have an educational opportunity here with the park to honor and remember those who have committed so much to our Parks and Recreation Department in the past.
You said it very well. There is, you know, with the new buildings that we're having in our community and some opportunities for this, the good thing about when we open this up to the community, those of us that have been around a while reflect upon those individuals that have kind of brought us to the place and set the table for the quality of life that we enjoy today. And people like Dennis and his family and so many others, Ray Duffy, who both I, we were in the same civic club, worked together on ballfields and so many people shaped not only the facilities that we have, but the people that we are because of the people that they were. And those kind of opportunities, when we look at our new facilities, to be able to tell the next generation to give them someone that they could emulate, those opportunities come along every so often and I think we need to take advantage of it, give due consideration for those individuals because, you know, we, where we're going is determined by where we've been and each time we have an opportunity to reflect upon the lives of those that have gone on, they inspire us and for our next citizens, those ones that will be the future city councilmen and women and directors of our departments, they need people to look up to and to, their lives can be inspirations. So, I appreciate the fact that we're going to do that and consider that particularly with two people I know very well, Dennis and Mr. Duffy.
Aye, ma'am.
And as we move forward on that, if it could be some way that people can read about these people, not just say Dennis Rainier, a lot of young people don't know who he is, people moving into the city and anything we name after somebody, if there can be a point of reference, maybe pointing them to the internet, they have a plaque telling them where they can go and learn about. I think that's very important because just naming after someone and it'll give more to me meaning and even to honor these people, if we could have somewhere that we can go back and reference and let people read about who these particular people were, not only for this park, but as we go forward and name things in our city.
Alright, well said by everyone. Alright, any other business that would come before the council? Ms. Moody, well done on your first, first meeting.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Hey, I got one more item I'm gonna bring up. This is gonna be a complete surprise to everybody up here. I wanna see what the process would be for changing the pay structure for the mayor. I'm serious as art that. I think it's a charter change and, you know, there's some stuff that's gonna have to go on, but, look, you know, I've just been watching what's going on, the amount of work that goes into this and, and I, look, you know, I purposely didn't say anything to you because I know what you'd say, but I'm all for considering and need to see what we need to do to make, you know, to try to consider that as a group.
I agree with Rick wholeheartedly. I think that when we look at the amount of workload that is placed on our mayor and the growth that our city has had since there hasn't been a change and, gosh, I'd hate to guess the last time the charter was amended, it's been quite some time, but, and I know there's nobody up here that serves for the money, but when you look at the amount of time and the dedication that Shane commits to this city, it's almost an insult to see what his compensation is. And so, I would like to agree that it should minimally be doubled what we're currently paying him and I think that sounds like a lot when you say that, but when the public realizes how little he's being compensated, I think there will be very little objection to this.
Have you looked at my check?
We can certainly look into that.
Well, I know who to go to.
Take a year or two.
When was the last time we ever considered any change in the salary of our mayor? Because I know when I came back on, it was the same thing for council and I, and I thought it was interesting that nothing had ever been considered.
And I tell you another thing too, is, you know, look, a lot of it is about what I've seen in the last three years of watching how much work goes into this and it is, I mean, it is, it's almost embarrassing to me to see that it really is that for a city our size and the amount of work that happens, but, you know, going forward, you know, as we look out into the future, what the role the mayor is and where that's going and getting bigger and more and more and how, you know, you know, what we're gonna need to do to promote that position and all that kind of stuff and I just think it makes sense to start looking down that road and whether that happens now or after the election, I don't know what the right political way to handle that is or whatever, you know, pros and cons of it, but-
Start a discussion, that's where it starts, yeah, I agree.
Man, it's- There is no wrong time to do the right thing.
There you go. That's good, Ed.
Alright, good deal. Sorry, bro.
Alright.
Alright, any other business?
No, my bad.
I'm gonna slap the gavel before something else comes up. We stand adjourned.